Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Thursday, May 17, 2018. Please rise, join me in the pledge.
My pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America, that we are a republic of which stands a nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in its essence.
Correspondence, nothing new. We'll skip that. Are there any public comments this evening? Do we have public here, but no comments? So, thank you. We have a couple of minutes to approve for previous meetings. First one is the special meeting of Friday, April 27, 2018. So, I'll put a motion on the floor that we approve that.
Second.
Any changes? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. And next would be the regular meeting of Tuesday, May 1, 2018. I'll put a motion on the floor that we approve that.
Second.
Okay, any comments? All right, hearing none. Those in favor? Aye. Aye, that carries. First selectman's report, I have a couple of things to pass out. Paul could not be here tonight, so I have some materials for him as well. So, what I have, first of all, I have two things from CCM. As you know, the state finally finished up its session, its short session, earlier this past week, I think by last Tuesday or Wednesday. And what I have given you is a recap of all the bills. I think there were 6,000 bills introduced through committee. Very few of them came all the way through to the floor, but a number of them did that would have, or do have, impact on local communities. So, I've passed out a sheet, like a recap, of all the different bills. There's like 50 or 60 of them, whether they passed or failed, whether CCM was behind it on behalf of small towns in Connecticut or not. And I also passed out a recap of the adopted state budget. And I put some, I'll hold this up so you can see. I put some totals in here that show, there's totals that show the entire state budget and what was finally adopted by the bipartisan vote, but I also put what Bethel gains from that. So, there were some sharing accounts that went up. ECS went up by about nine, a little over 900,000, almost a million. Some other accounts went down. The net change to the town is that we should receive $996,000 more in the upcoming fiscal year than what we had budgeted. Now, if you were at the Board of Finance meeting that just concluded a few minutes ago, you will note that that was not taken into account by the Board of Finance, that they elected to effectively put that in the bank if it comes through. And the reason for that is that there's a high degree of uncertainty as to whether or not the, a new governor might issue rescissions against some of those funds, too. One of the most important things that the legislature did was it passed a bill which eliminates the governor's ability to make mid-year rescissions on education spending, which is a very good, at least in the current fiscal year. So, that prevents the governor from pulling the rug out from towns' school funding in the middle of the fiscal year, but it doesn't say anything about removing other types of funding, nor does it say the governor can't issue, try to issue a bill for pensions, which we know tried to do. So, I, my personal opinion is that the Board of Finance was extremely prudent and cautious in not taking this revenue into account and passing it down into the lower middle rate. I think that would have been a short-sighted thing to do. So, I commend them for that. That's all I have for first selectman's report. Rich, did you have anything?
No.
Any questions? All right.
Can you give an update on the weather?
Oh, on the weather, okay. As of tonight, in fact, in the Board of Finance meeting just 20 minutes ago, I received a call from the highway superintendent, and all roads are open. The only partial blockage is on Payne Road at this hour, so tonight is at 17:00. There's one lane open on Payne Road. Most of the wires have, well, all the wires have been made safe. This afternoon, I think about 500, between 500 and 600 homes were re-energized, were reconnected. That brings the total of the remaining down to about 1,400 from a total of 2,000 originally after the storm hit. And Eversource has estimated that Bethel will be what they call substantially complete restoration by midnight tomorrow night. Substantially complete means that there, that all major circuits will be re-energized, and there may still be individual homes on side caps that may need more extensive repair to those service lines and those homes, but all circuits will be up and running by midnight. And so far, they seem to be making extremely good progress. We have, at present, seven multi-man teams working with our highway department. They're maximizing the daylight, so they're still on the job right now, you know, still clearing roads and working with the Eversource crews to help repair the lines. So, so far, so good. And I think, I want to thank the highway department for their work. They've been out from dawn till dusk since this happened, doing cleanup and working to restore travel. I think that Mr. Dibble and his team have done a great job, and of course, Tom Galliford, who sleeps about an hour and a half at night when things like this happen, and has been out, not only working with our teams, but really working very closely with Eversource. And when I say very closely, I mean, he's pressing it very, very hard to get resources into our town to fix. So, my hats off to Mr. Dibble and Mr. Galliford for their fine work. And just for the record, I don't think anybody's going to be watching this afterwards, but the municipal center will remain open as long as there are people who don't have power. We will have showers here available for them and at Stony Hill Firehouse, as well as Free Life House.
Just, the crews, the Eversource crews, do they work into the night, or is that the dusk?
It depends. There are crews that do some clearing at night. They don't, they won't do line work at night, but they do, they'll do a little bit of clearing. And there, we have contractors, and S1 is in town. We've got people from Canada and from other states. So, they all seem to have arrived at noon today. So, like I said, we have five or six groups working right now, and each crew has four men on it. So, they're, and then they're working with their own department, so so far, so good. I think we're making some progress. And of course, I want to express my condolences to those individuals in other communities. There was one critical injury and two fatalities related to this storm. And our neighbors to the north do have a much, much bigger task ahead of them than cleaning up. When I checked at 6 o'clock tonight, Brookfield was still 88 percent without power, and New Fairfield was 83. So, they have a long, long way to go before they get, they get back up and running. And I've heard that New Fairfield schools could be closed for another week before they can get through. It's really quite bad up there. So, Bethel, what to them? Bethel did send a lot of fire, fire and EMT response immediately following the storm up to Brookfield to help out. Both Stony Hill and Bethel Fire Department chipped in, mutual aid. We are very, very grateful for that. And now that, when we get our situation under control, probably by tomorrow, we could send some highway crews up there, too, to help out and try to get them back up and running. So, any other questions?
No.
All right. Okay, first, old business. I'm going to put a motion on the floor. Obviously, we had to, due to the storm Tuesday night, we could not run the public hearing that we had planned to talk about the water labor charges from the Water Department that were sent over from the PUC. So, I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we establish Tuesday, June 5, 2018, at 6:30 PM in meeting room A of this building. I'll just say Clifford Hurgen Municipal Center, I'll change it, to reschedule the public hearing Thursday. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Nope. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. New business, consideration of closure of PT Barnum Square for Summer Fest in Dawn. I think you are here to explain, correct?
I am.
Okay, floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. Dawn Fawcett, in case you guys don't know who I am, representing the Bethel Chamber of Commerce. Heather, since her regards, if she cannot be here today, she's out of town. I wanted to just read the letter that we had sent over to you. The annual Bethel Summer Fest will be on Saturday, July 14. This year, we will be focusing on supporting local businesses. It starts off on Friday with the Sixth Annual Beer Fest, which will be held from 6:00 to 9:00 PM here on the lawn of the municipal center. The Beer Fest and Summer Fest are fundraisers for the Bethel Chamber of Commerce. Proceeds from these events go toward community events, scholarships, and our neighbors help neighbors that give back to the community. Beer Fest has grown over the past five years to become a Bethel favorite and is a big draw for the people of Bethel. On Saturday, July 14, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM will be Summer Fest. There's plenty of activities happening all throughout town. On the lawn of the municipal center, we will have Splash Fest, a variety of vendors, food, trucks, live animals, and games. On the lawn of the public library will be nonprofit vendors, music from local students from Bethel Music Center, and also performances by the Park and Rec Summer Youth Theater. Along Greenwood Avenue, there'll be sidewalk sales and games. And then on PT Barnum Square, we would like to close the square from 11:00 to 4:00, like we have done for many years in the past. We'll have vendors, live music, and games on the square. We're asking for your support to close off PT Barnum Square. We feel that the closure of the square is the best opportunity for the safety of all who attend. The main reason the Chamber plans these types of events are to bring people into our downtown area to see what an amazing community we have, in hopes that they will either relocate here, or even better, love it so much that they want to have a storefront in town. PT Barnum Square provides the perfect opportunity for us to do that without having to go through the complex and expensive process of closing Greenwood Avenue. We understand that the event like this may cause a temporary interruption in certain businesses, but the exposure of not only the town, but to other businesses is priceless. Our event draws crowds from all over the region and surrounding countries, sorry, counties. Our best guesstimate is that about 70 percent of the attendees come from out of town. A few businesses would like to ensure that parking is appropriate, customers can get to their establishments, and details are communicated. We are taking care of this with the Bethel Police, maps, and other strategies. We have walked along Greenwood Avenue and have verbal support of businesses. The businesses are excited about the opportunity, and so is the community. We hope that we get the Board of Selectmen's approval for closing PT Barnum Square.
Okay. So, the hours for Saturday, the 14th of July, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, correct?
Correct.
And in the, well, I'm going to put a motion on the floor to start discussion, that we approve closure of PT Barnum Square, subject to all other provisions such as insurance, police commission, and so on.
Second.
Okay. So, in the past, I know the, that the Chamber has made some provisions for the dress shop to have parking nearby?
Yes.
And you've got that in place again?
Correct. We've got that in place, yep.
Okay.
Does anyone else have concerns?
Not that we know of at this time.
Okay. All right, it's, you had mentioned about the liability or insurance for that. I have a question about the Beer Fest. Is the Chamber, does the Chamber have liability insurance for the Beer Fest?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we've applied for our permit.
And also for the slippy slides?
Yes.
Thing for use of the municipal law?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Right. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. All right, well, we have a, we have motion on the floor to approve closure to support Summer Fest, as we have in the past. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item number two is consideration of the old train station canopy. Rich, are you familiar with that?
Just, I know it's in bad shape. I don't know what they did about it.
Okay.
Do you have bids on it, or?
Yeah, I'm going to turn the floor over to Janice in a minute, as well as to Marty, because he's, he's created a resolution for us, a motion. The short story is that the state of Connecticut deeded over, conditional deed for the train station, you know, decades ago, but the state of Connecticut still owns the canopy. The canopy has not been maintained. It's actually becoming a hazard, a public hazard, because it is beginning to deteriorate to the point where sections of roof are now falling through to the ground, and it is not stable. And the state of Connecticut was going to tear it down some years ago. What we asked the state to do is deed the canopy over to us, because it is part of the historic railroad station structure. And it essentially allow us to reconstruct it in the historical, in an appropriately historical way, but then give us some money to pay for a part of that construction. Because if, if we didn't take it over, the state would have to pay something like $30,000 to have it demolished and removed. So, they agreed to do that. So, that's the good news. The bad news is there is not enough money in the account to cover that. And just as a reminder, the train station account is segregated. It's not part of the general fund. It doesn't go through the Board of Finance. It is essentially its own independent enterprise fund. But in order to do this, we would have to essentially borrow $175,000 from the general fund, and then it would be paid back through the rent that's paid by the tenant. So, Janice, is there anything you need to add to that? Did that just make you sit here for no?
That's exactly everything you were going to say.
Yeah.
Exactly, that's what I was going to say.
You just, I made you sit here for no reason, right? Okay, Marty, did you have anything to add to that?
No, just that, just that, Rich, they have, they have drawings that were done by, I can't even say these people's names.
Rizzo.
Spiegel, Zabon, and Sha, they did it. They've got it up, so. And we got a breakdown from Rizzo, and what we decided was, we thought it would be in the best interest if we waived the bid, because we needed information, and if someone is going to go ahead and do the work, it's one thing to provide us with the information. If they're not going to do the work and they got a bid with everybody else, we're not going to get the information. And we needed it for the state. So, we thought it'd be best for Rizzo. And I think, I don't see written down here, but I think if you, Janice, you can back me up on this, that the old train station committee got Rizzo to drop his price 16 percent from what the original amount was.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think I was out of town for that meeting.
You were.
And see, if we could possibly get some state money for the demolition of the old canopy?
Yeah, so the state has said that they would give us approximately $36,800.
I'm sorry, how much?
$36,800.
$36,800. And that would?
That would be for the demolition.
Demolition is like, what, $24,800? And then I think the rest is to pay for flagging.
So, that would offset the cost?
Right. They're going to reimburse us.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep up on the computer. What was the amount? $36,000?
$36,800.
Okay, I'm sorry.
36800, right?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Just, Matt, can you just put another line here, that any grant money would go to offset the cost?
Well, that's not, you got to make a second motion. That's just the motion to waive the bid.
Yeah.
You got to make a second motion to approve the total expenditure, break it down, and then, and then pass it on to the Board of Finance. I didn't do the other motion, I figured.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I'm going to read, so we actually have to make three motions out of this. I'm going to read the first one. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen in accord, this is the bid waiver, by the way. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen, in accordance with the provision of the Town of Bethel Charter, Section C8-13C44 and Section C8-13C43, finds that it is in the public interest and the public economy to waive the bidding requirements for the replacement of the canopy of the old train station on Depot Place, on property owned by the state of Connecticut, but used by an encroaching on the Town of Bethel property, and award the contract to Rizzo Corporation, subject to approval by the Board of Finance and approval at a special town meeting. Rizzo Corporation has provided quotes for the demolition and removal of the old canopy and construction of a new canopy. The cost of the demolition and construction of the canopy is $142,600, with an additional cost of $10,000 for flagging and track protection furnished by Metro North Commuter Railroad. Total cost of the project is $175,490, which includes a 15 percent contingency. The reasons for the bid waiver are as follows. One, the nature of the work can only be performed by firms that have completed contractor safety courses to work on or near railroad tracks. There are no other local firms that the town is aware of that currently have completed said courses, other than with the Rizzo Corporation. Two, the Rizzo Corporation is considering, is considered a strong firm with specialty in construction in and around railroad tracks. Number three, the project is of urgency. The canopy has been determined to be unsafe and must be replaced. To proceed through the official bid process would be timely, would be timely and jeopardize the securing of the state of Connecticut reimbursement for the demolition of the canopy. Number four, in order for the state money to be secured for the reimbursement of the demo, for the demolition of the canopy, the Town of Bethel is required to have an estimate for the work from a certified vendor, which has been provided by the Rizzo Corporation. Five, the town has not, has not had any interest from any other vendor to bid on the project. Six, the cost provided by the Rizzo Corporation is considered to be fair. This cost has been thoroughly negotiated with the firm from February 2017 to present. The town has negotiated an approximate 16 percent savings from the original proposed quote. It is further resolved that the first selectman and his or, and/or his designees, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, is hereby authorized to execute any documents and to take any actions necessary or appropriate to effectuate and finalize the foregoing. Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. So, I'm going to make a second motion, that we approve a request to borrow, I think is the correct word, an amount not to exceed $175,490 from the general fund for the demolition and replacement of the canopy, funds to be repaid by, by rents paid by the tenant and by reimbursement from the state of Connecticut. And forward same to Board of Selectmen for, or Board of Finance for their approval.
Second.
Okay, any further?
Can I just say something? I don't know if you want to make it conditioned upon getting the grant money from the state. I'm assuming we're going to get it.
Yeah.
But they still have to review what we sent up. They said they'd give it to us, but if, if what happens is, if something happens and we don't get it, we don't have enough money to do the project.
How about if I say if any?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, reimbursement's if any. Okay, I'll just add that. Okay. You still signed it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any further comments?
No.
Hearing that, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And last but not least.
You're recommending that to the Board of Finance.
Yeah, yeah, didn't I say that? Okay.
I do have a question for Janice. Is there currently any money left in the account?
There's approximately $30,000 in the account.
And that'll be applied to that now.
We can, yes.
I think they thought if they got everything, it'd be about, about $100,000. And that would be paid back. What did you figure, like, 2000 by 2021?
2021, the end of 2021.
Something like that, yeah.
When does the Board of Finance meet again? They don't meet again until the second week of June, right?
Yeah.
I thought they said June 5.
Yeah, June 5, I think they mentioned.
That, no, that's, they're 12.
June 12.
Yeah, that's a long way off.
I thought they said the 5th. They said the 5th today.
Hmm. Well, I might have, I was going to try to establish a town meeting, but I think we have to try to negotiate with the Board of Finance and see if they can pull a special meeting together.
Special meeting?
Yeah, so let's, yeah, I'll leave that open. All right, so that, that'll be a little unfinished business, unfortunately. All right, well, I will contact the chair and see if we can move that forward. All right, so that concludes item number two. Items number three and four, we're going to have to table, because Mr. Craddy from the Energy Commission could not be here tonight, and he has all the paperwork on these proposals. So, the last item on the agenda.
Could I, could I just ask?
Don?
No, no, Carrie or Larry?
Oh, never mind. No, no, I don't, false alarm, sorry.
Will those rooms support?
Well, here, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear about the relationship between the potential solar projects and the Rockwell and Johnson renovations. In our design, we don't have a complete solar project included in the design.
Right.
But we have made it clear with the architect to design the roofs in such a fashion that if there is a future solar project, they could be affixed to the roof.
Right, okay, that's what, that's what I'm.
That was my only concern, because in reading that this was on the agenda, I didn't want any misperception. It is not a part.
Correct.
Of the project that has been proposed.
Right. All those solar projects are self-funding from all the nuts and bolts and wires.
Okay.
So, it would not come out of, but.
Perkins Eastman is aware that they are designing the roof such that it would allow for.
Okay, that's, that was my question. Thank you.
Yeah, there are some implications, however, we believe, that if you go forward with something that you didn't originally present, we don't need that to, you know, put a different set of circumstances in front of the school grant committee. They've already approved it. Solar was not a part of that. And, you know, I don't know what kind of process you have to go through if you say it's going to be designed, solar would be potentially down the road if we decide to pursue that. If you have a grant now, what kind of issues does that raise, given what they approved? The architect doesn't have solar in the design of this. They're making accommodations for it, but we don't have it in the plan right now.
Right, but I believe, and Bill Craddock could attest to this, but it would be no cost, we would be no cost from the town or the state to do the solar projects on the school.
And that's perfectly fine. I just want to make sure they were separate, it was separate and distinct.
Yeah, they're totally separate projects.
And that we're not blurring lines between the two projects.
No, right. Just the coordination to make sure that the roof will support what they're going to put on top of it.
Yes, and at the next meeting, you can confirm that again with Perkins Eastman, but I know the night Bill Craddy came to talk about some solar options, Joe Costa was aware that it would have to be designed in a certain way.
Well, as I understand it, all the commission wanted us to do tonight is give them a go-ahead to apply for the Z-Rack.
Okay.
Which, if it comes through, we can use it or not use it.
Okay.
But if we, if we go, if we wait too long, the opportunity to apply for it would expire, and then we can't, then we're kind of out and cold.
Yeah, there's only so much is given out.
We're not opposed to solar. It's a great thing. We just want to make sure that we're clear that the funding is not in our project.
Right, no, I understand.
Good.
Is there a deadline by which you have to use this grant?
I don't even know, I don't think it's a.
Is it a two-year period?
I don't know.
Again, as I said, there's some.
Well, to apply for the E-Rex.
Z-Rex.
Z-Rex.
Yeah.
Is a certain timeframe, so they have to get in on a certain timeframe. And there's a list of people, and you have to qualify for it. So, if, if you could get passed by to the next go-around.
Right.
So, you know, that's why you wanted to get going on.
There will be some design cost implications. If you're getting the roof ready for it now, and then all of a sudden, you've got to install it and have it in, and we're planning that in what we presented in how we're moving forward. You know, that's a variance in the cost.
You just want to make sure the phasing is done, so that you can get your project.
Well, even if it's, you know, five years after the renovations are done, it would be all part of the solar project cost to incorporate all that.
Right, good, good.
From my past experience, but, you know, things are subject to change.
All right, well, we'll have to deal with that when you can be here with us. So, moving on to the final item, is we finally have a full list of candidates for the Charter Revision Commission Committee. So, I'm going to put a motion on the floor to appoint the following individuals. Joyce Hess, Melanie O'Brien, John Lennon, Sharon Strayton, Patrick Parifort, Teresa Letalier, and Nicholas Hoffman. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
No.
This gives us a very interesting panel. We have three Rs, three Ds, and one unaffiliated. So we have a, a truly bipartisan panel. So I think this is going to be a very rewarding process.